This meeting to order, I'm gonna call it six fifty-nine, I'm gonna call it seven P M. Um, this is the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Dayton Independent School District. And it's October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, and we have a forum. We got Derek Paul out of the room, but with us, Beavideo.
Derek, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you clearly.
Yes, do you, can you see us, or do you need us to pull the screen down a little bit?
Can you pull it down a little bit? It's not so good. Derek, come on.
Hi, Derek.
Thank you.
Okay, good deal. All right, so item number two is our invocation. I've asked Matthew Morton from the Saint Joe Baptist Church to come and give us our invocation. So Matt?
I debated driving up here, if I was supposed to address y'all, you know, properly, you know. But, uh, figured, man, I'll just pray. So, we all pray with me. Father God, we, uh, we thank you for a beautiful day. And, uh, Lord, we thank you for the cool weather and the promise that seasons change. And, uh, God, we, uh, we celebrate that. And, Lord, we pray now for this time specifically, uh, as, as we gather, to, uh, do the work of educating our young people and raising our young people to be responsible and, uh, and helpful citizens in this world. And we pray that you would honor that. And, uh, we pray specifically for our leadership in our schools, for our principals, and counselors, and teachers, God, that you would give them the strength they need. We pray, Lord, for, uh, our students as well, as, as we're entering into time where, where kids are sick and, and schedules are crazy, God, that you would just comfort them and reassure them and give them the strength they need to, uh, to continue learning and, uh, finish this semester strong. And we pray for this school board as well. The decisions they make, that they not only would be the best in, in, in the best interest of, of this school system, but, uh, Lord, that they would honor you as well. We pray these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much for doing that.
You're very welcome.
Um, our next item is gonna be the pledge, and we are gonna be, um, led by, yes? Um, okay, get that. Ms. Golding's gonna lead us off. Everyone will face the flag and hand over heart.
Please stand for pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for coming and doing that, Flores. Do you, does she wanna get tricky? She thinks.
She's got, she's got.
She's got some goodies. She got, she got payment. Thank you so much. Okay, our next item is citizen, uh, participation, and I had Matthew sign in as a guest, but he, obviously, he's already done his piece. Is there any, anyone on this for citizen participation? Um, so we are actually gonna rearrange our agenda just a little bit in the order. We're gonna move to, um, number seven. Uh, we have Stu Madison here with us this evening, and he's got a drive ahead of him. So we're gonna hit, um, the topics under that, uh, category, um, first. And so that is closed session items. And so I know you all get it up, but we are gonna have to, uh, move into closed session for a short period of time. All right, we're gonna do that at seven and three.
Let me see, Derek, yeah. This full screen, yeah.
Yeah.
Do I need to pause?
Yes, please. Thank you for remembering.
Thank you. Sure.
Seven thirty, seven thirty. Okay, bye-bye. Can we go back into, okay. Let's, um, so we're back in session, let's move to the consent agenda, um, and everyone's, I'm hoping you have pre-read groups of minutes of previous meetings. Are there any, um, corrections or changes for either, um, the budget meeting or the regular meeting on August twenty-eighth? Okay. Let's move on to point two, comparison of revenue to budget and tax budgets.
Okay, there's actually two of the revenue to budget. Well, there's all this, we're pausing after budget. That's the, the one you're probably interested in, and the, the friend it was. And if you save me, or we spent ten percent of our budget, uh, received fourteen percent of our, of our income that we projected. And if it went well, uh, the rollover was, uh, successful, and, and, uh, we, that always takes a few days, and then it's a little dramatic, but, but we, everything's going well. We have collected, since our last meeting, and obviously, we've collected eleven thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty-one cents in taxes. This is the slow time of the year, you know, protecting a lot of students.
Okay, um, any questions on that? Okay, I think we will then make a, looking for a motion on this to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second. Are those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, let's move into discussion items, then. Let's talk about campus reports and program reviews.
Any questions? Okay. I'm just, kind of just very quickly, just start to feel things that are happening going on. We met as, with our campus improvement team, just to kind of look at different needs on the campus. And we also had our parent meetings on September twenty-fifth, and so those were a success. We had a big turnout, and a lot of parents came to visit with teachers and their meetings. Um, on October eleventh, um, Courtney Beltran came. She is the early childhood specialist from Region fourteen. She comes and works with, she'll, with teachers from pre-k up through second grade. And she comes, she observes teachers, she gives them feedback, things that she notices, things that they may be able to do for improvement, and she'll come and meet with me and give me some suggestions or ideas. So it's, it's always helpful to have another person come that's not familiar with all the teachers and sees things from a different perspective. She's very positive and a lot of wonderful things to say. Um, also Patty Crouch, she was also new to Region fourteen, I believe, I, I didn't.
Yes, she did.
Okay, I did not know her. Um, she's wanted to take Amy Coates' position when she left Region fourteen. And so she works with, uh, she's curriculum specialist that comes. She'll do a lot of the same things, but her, the particular purpose I had her come, she was working, uh, with data with third through fifth grade teachers, looking at the start, pass, start assessment. She'll break it down to the different question types, giving the teachers resources, how to look at that information yourselves. And they talk about how, what, like, for example, what is the frequent, frequently most missed question? And then breaking that down and saying, what, what answer did the students choose? Why did they choose that? So just kind of looking for different things that may be common mistakes that children are making, or misconceptions that they had, so to try and make things better for, on future assessments. Um, I wanted to go over, I put on your desk this little paper, these are the board goals that we, that were set back in prior COVID, no doubt.
We got nothing.
Yeah. And so basically, what we're doing in that is tracking what would be this year's second graders. So it's kind of like comparing apples to oranges in a way. So if you'll notice, like, the first board goal is an early childhood literacy goal. And that is where, uh, you have all determined that sixty-two to six, will be for sixty-two to sixty-five percent of students, um, will be, uh, at grade level or above, so meaning they'll be at meets or masters by twenty-tw- twenty-twenty-five. And the same is true with the early math goals, which is on the back page, and, and that is, students will be fifty-one to sixty percent by June twenty-twenty-five. And so if you look at that, um, we put on there how students did this year, even though that's the comparing the apples to oranges, because that's not the group of students we're tracking, but just to see how they did. If it were the, this past year, we would already have well exceeded. I mean, like, we are, um, over our goal by nineteen percent. That's where we wanted the students to be. So we're saying we want them to be sixty-five percent. Our students were at eighty-four percent this year, so far above that. That does not mean that's how this next year's group will do. It means it'll be entirely separate. We always hope so, and the same is true with the math. So on math, this year's group, um, was at sixty-two percent, so we were over our goal by two percent. But again, we're comparing a different group of students. And so one of the ways, one of the things we had to do is, after these goals were set, is think, how are we monitoring this? How are we making sure that we're on track and on the right path for the students to be successful or to meet those goals? And that's where math comes in. This is where you are comparing apples to apples, because you are looking at those students and how they are progressing. So if you look under the reading, this little first graph is talking about the reading. Um, so here's the twenty-two, twenty-three school year of the students who were in first grade last year. So if you look at where they were back last year, the first two, the light blue and the navy blue are projected goals. So like, they projected on the light blue, that, that's how students would score at the beginning of the year. And if you notice, that's exactly pretty much where we were in the orange. So then if you look at the navy blue compared to the teal color, that's where they're projecting that they should be, and we exceeded that on the teal color. If that makes sense. Um, if you look at the teal color compared to the orange in the twenty-three, twenty-four, that's where the same group of students are today. So at the end of the, end of last year, the teal color on the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, that's where they scored. If you notice, jumping across to the orange, that's how they tested this fall. So one thing I noticed about that is, once our students have it, they have it. They're not losing it. So even with the summer slide, they're still exactly the same place they were when they left, which is good. And we're not losing a whole lot of ground, so they are retaining what they've been taught. Um, if you look, just comparing year to year, if you're looking orange to orange, um, you can see the growth that they've made. So from this spring, from that time last year to this time this year. So, um, the last part, twenty-four, twenty-five, are the projected goals that are goal year, uh, where the students should be. So kind of, and it's the same in the math as well. So I won't read over all that, which I can kind of tell the same thing. Um, we are exceeding where we're clearly projected we will be, so we're hoping that these, um, quiz results stay on track, and we're taking the progress they've been making. And especially considering that we set these goals prior to COVID, so we've certainly covered that around and inside.
So I think it really wasn't that wrong that we went back over these goals, and we all agree, which we'll, and we'll hit them again in the future, but, um, we all agree that we would stay conservative with our numbers and kind of just watch it. So it'll be interesting to see what happens.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I'll just kind of go over the, what's happening at Perkins Middle School. We have our sixth graders going on a field trip tomorrow to Longhorn Caverns, so we hope that everybody is, does their job, and keeps their hands on the walls and that sort of thing. Um, our cross-country team just finished their season. We had four participants, um, Jaylee Cooper, Eden Joe, Brooke Morris, and LaKala Barkley. And we're finished in the top ten. They all improved on their times and worked really hard. Uh, Junior High Volleyball will finish their season next week, and they've really shown a lot of growth. If you haven't been able to get to volleyball game, they really have improved from the beginning of the season till now. And then our cupcat football teams, they have three games left, and they really have had successful seasons. We're proud of them, too. On September twenty-fifth, we held our student-led conferences. This is our second year to do them that way, and the teachers really feel like it's the most beneficial, um, for everyone to have that student with their parent or guardian there at the conference. Um, so we did that. Um, we just really have been working on trying to see the value of open communication with parents and guardians. Um, our goal this year is to create a partnership between the school and home, because ultimately, we all want the students to become healthy, successful members of our community. And so we've really been working on, call the parent, contact the parent, let them know, um, just really working on that. And we have been working towards our academic U I L meet that will be happening November thirtieth in Haco. There are a lot of students that, um, are, have been really interested in that, some students that weren't in the past, and they are now. Um, and we just have a little time of the day where you see students going in all different directions that they are working in, so I'm excited for them. Last week, we had our campus staff-based decision-making committee, um, meeting, and this was a really great time for, uh, communication with parents and community members, just to kind of explain what's taking place, and go over our family engagement policy, our parents-to-compact, those sorts of things. Um, and then, um, we met, um, to plan and organize our November sixth staff development day. That was also with Patty Crouch, um, and she's kind of guided that. I'm really excited about that day. I feel like that we've, um, planned it in a way that's gonna be beneficial, and the teachers will think it was a good use of their time. So we have people coming from us from the service center to focus on math and science content areas that day, and that will happen at the middle school. And then Cardlin Lvario, if I say that correctly, she created an E L A R curriculum, um, and she's gonna be here to work with our English Languages Arch teachers, so my teacher will go to the elementary for that. Um, the elementary used her curriculum last year, and they felt like it was very successful, very well done, and, and helped their scores. And so our goal on the November sixth is to take away knowledge that will help us increase our meets and masters scores across the board, and really work on getting those higher. So that's all. Thank you.
Quick overview of high school, we're busy. Um, really, campus improvement team, uh, met in the summer. I gave them an update on the start of the year via email not too long ago, just kind of on the progression of how things are going. Um, the focus this year is gonna be parent, uh, community engagement, community awareness for that, uh, committee, and what we, the outcome of the meeting. We too have had Patty Crouch come and kind of talk about the November, um, professional development meeting, um, student advisory council met the other day, that's the, the students that meet with me and Miller and Miss Ivy and kind of give us feedback on stuff. Got some great information out of them. Um, I'm really impressed with the, the suggestions they've provided. So, um, we got pre-S A T rocking and rolling, thanks to Ms. Quinn, um, and just getting kids ready to, to move down the road. I provided this right here in regards to board goals, C C M R. Look at C C M R, our goal is to be a hundred percent C C M R by twenty-twenty-five, and then we have another goal of being forty percent industry-based certification by twenty-twenty-five as well. At the top, you see the cohort twenty-twenty-four, that's our current seniors. At the bottom, I provided you a glimpse of what last year looked like from a graduated senior. Um, you can see last year, we were ninety-eight percent, uh, meets C C M R, on that C C M R standard, which is fantastic. The T S I A two test, that's a college placement test that, uh, these point in society will be urgently on getting our kids to pass. Um, and then you, you have the data of the kids that passed on both English and math right there. Um, and then below that, you have the T S I A two with, through the Bridges program, which they meet the college entrance through the Bridges program. Um, and then you see the numbers, percentages there. And then last year, we had twenty-four percent that got an industry-based certification. Current this year, our goals, we met the other day, uh, we partner with Mya Insurance School, that consulting, which is fantastic, we meet weekly almost, it's like.
Twice a month.
Twice a month. Uh, with a gentleman, Marshall, is fantastic, provides great advice for it, and, and Ms. Quinn is kind of the driver of that. Um, we meet, and we look at where we're at in regards to C C M R, T S I, college readiness, and all that wonderful stuff. I have a projection of, uh, my goal is a hundred percent this year, getting C C M R. Uh, we met with the teachers, we have teachers involved in that committee process with Marshall, um, one of the few schools that actually got it set up, where teachers are involved in those meetings. Um, our goal is to have seventy percent of our students, um, in the, the senior class meet T S I through, um, just, T S I two in D L A, and fifty percent math just on the test without the Bridges program. Bridges program is a great safety app, but it's not a great, um, plan, if that makes sense. You know, we want our kids to be successful on the test from the get-go. That way, um, we know that we're driving stronger instruction in classroom. And then forty percent in industry-based certification is what we're looking for. Provided there are some projections in regards to the completers and the concentrators, um, that's the number of students throughout programs of study that's completed. If they completed, they're completely considered a completer. That means they've taken four sequence, four courses in a sequence. Um, a concentrator means they have about three of those courses, okay? And then over there, you get your occurrence, uh, numbers of where students are at as of the twenty-third, we compare those, um, with the college readiness down there from last year, so we're on a good track right now. Concerns, we don't even have a spring semester in there. And then the big graph in the middle, purple with the maroon one, that shows you where our students are cohort here right now, what program study they're in. So I think we're on, we're on a good pace. A lot of people are involved in this, and, uh, I can probably be tracking our goals.
And these are whole books, so you can put them in, in your standards, it's not going to handle a lot.
That's both sets, I think, as well.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Okay, discussion items, five point line? Nope, we just did that, let's not do it again. Oh, sorry, Mr. Miller?
A couple things on school safety. Thank you, Mr. Captain, since this helps me do the door safety audit every week. We still are going around checking doors, and now we're checking gates as well, making sure they're locked, latched, and, uh, do it on every campus. And, um, we found a few, we always talk to the principal in there, or talk to the people, and let them know why it should be locked. And it's been, it's been a good year for that. We've, we've done real well this year about locking doors, not propping doors. Started kind of a few was propped open at the very beginning, and everybody's got the message now, so this is a good thing. Uh, we submitted our, eh, E O P, emergency operation plans, basic plan, to the Texas School Safety Center. We're waiting for them to either approve it or send it back for corrections. I haven't sent anything back yet as far as, I haven't got anything. Um, and so for safety portion, we are right on track, and we are in our year of audit. So Mr. Alcorta, is that how you say his name? Alcorta will be auditing us this year from the Region fourteen, but we don't know when, and he'll show up and, and do it. And we are a big three-year audit every three years. Um, as for the band, we marched the taller competition two weeks ago. Uh, our first performance was lackluster, it was not very good. Our second performance, we really stepped it up and did great, we got a one-two-two on that performance, and, uh, we finished fifth overall there. And then this last weekend, we were a U I L competition, we got two. Everybody shoot for that one, but they don't give those out. And where we started, y'all saw us at the beginning of the year, and where we're at right now, we have enormous growth, and we have found our niche. We are really starting to grow as a band, and it's a great thing, and it's a fun time now. So be patient, good things are coming down the pipe, we, we're getting better every day, so. Uh, right now, we're heading into junior high region band, will be trying out in November, on November fourth, for the region band for junior high, and then high school is December second, Christmas concert, and our semester will be wild fast, so.
Thank you. Chris Allen, your opinion?
Uh, we just went through our first round validation. Uh, we were not selected for title one, that's a big deal. Uh, we were, uh, selected for migrant, and, uh, Kate Daniels unlocked a migrant, um, the work, and easy peasy, we'll put it in tomorrow, it'll be good. So that's basically it right now, it's just a little more time with all the, the grants coming in and everything.
How many migrant students are there here?
There are seventeen, it's about now sixteen are on our campuses and one is homeschool, but they're in that district, so they're still on our, um, list.
What, where are they, elementary, middle, high school?
I have three, uh, high school, don't think we have any on the middles. We have one on the middle school campus, and the rest are on the elementary campus.
Interesting.
And we would have, the homeschool is the middle school's niche.
Okay, thank you. Let's move into five point two, the presentation of the State of Our Schools report and district program plans.
Well, actually, I've, I have not responded, um, for the state of the schools and for the plans. Um, thi- this is something that we provide to you each year. It's, it's really for you, but it benefits us because we, it makes us go through and look at, look at ourselves and reevaluate things and, and everything, but this is for, for you to keep. We would like to own notebooks back, so, so that you will, um, accumulate many, many, many of your shelves. But, um, this is just an, an exercise that we feel is very important, for you to have at your fingertips, and it's up for reference. The other one is actually the district plans. This is every organization, this is, these are, these are their handbooks, from ag, uh, F F A to van to athletics to whatever, they're huge. And so we, we color code them, so that it's, it's easy to find. I always tease and say that the, um, cheerleaders are red, but, um, they are. Uh, but anyway, this is so if someone calls you and asks you a question, you can find it easily, the, the rules are here. These are things that parents have copies of, uh, students have copies of, uh, if they're in this, this organization. So this is something that I find very valuable. Uh, there's one of these on the page, principal's desk, and, um, then we, we always make, um, ever have any vacancies that we could have on, on our board, we make a couple so that, that like, when you get, I like to, if you'll recall, you've got a copy of this, so that you have something right away to, to reference. But anyway, any questions on it? Uh, and, and please, if you come across something or whatever, always call me and, um, make suggestions or whatever that, to help us. It just wants to always be something very, very useful. And Derek, I have yours here at the office.
Okay, great. Um, five point two, facility projects update?
Well, everything is going well, uh, the fences are all in place, uh, and, and they meet the recommendations of the state council now. I was so worried, and I think I said that to you all, that, that we made a little higher , it might be offensive, but I don't think it did, I think it actually improved a little. It, I continue to be very pleased that the traffic flow at, at middle school, high school is so much better, uh, because of the, the way we have, uh, the students directed by the fences. And, um, we don't have the traffic, the through traffic during the day for, uh, cars going back and forth, and that has helped tremendously, not having, um, cars going back and forth through our, through our campus. So, so that's good. The, um, lighting projects have been, uh, great. I've had several people come in on how nice it is after games to be able to not, um, not stumble to their parking, uh, place, getting their cars. Um, we, I, when I cut this, I said we were getting proposals on the carpet, uh, replacement at the middle, at the special ed co-op. Uh, we have gotten those, and we have gone ahead and told them to come and fix that. I'm not sure if you all were aware or remember that we had a flood over there, and, um, it really still smells pretty bad, and so we kind of did the best we could to get school started, but, but now we're going to have to replace the carpet. Eventually, you know, all, all of this carpet probably needs to be replaced. I think this is, is all this, I don't know, maybe the hospital, I don't know.
Whenever it was originally renovated, it was put in right after.
Was it, was it, was it in? But anyway, uh, that carpet in the, in the co-op has been wet several times because they've, that was not the first time that they've had, over there. So anyway, um, that is being fixed, and so they'll, it'll be much fresher over there. Um, anything else is going well, um, it really, really is. I might go back just a little bit, because, um, the test scores weren't mentioned, but, but you all know what the test scores are, and they are wonderful. But I really would like to say that, that a special honor that, that Lawrence Campus, uh, our fifth grade teacher had the highest scores of any fifth grade Language Arts teacher in the region. And our, uh, third grade.
Third grade was tied.
Our third grade.
Had the highest.
Had the highest in approaches, but they were tied for first for each semester, I believe.
Yeah, as a, as a group and, um.
I believe fourth grade was running, running, they were all very close.
Very, very close.
They all, they all for sure had the most in students getting approaches. And I think they were all tied or fourth grade maybe, I can't remember.
Very, very proud of, uh, progress across the district. Uh, I'm, I'm just thinking that our teachers have worked really, really, really hard and our students have been, been inspired and worked really, really hard. So, um, I think it's worth mentioning.
Yes, it was very interesting. I, I wish they would do the same for, um, math, but is it Gina Higgins, I think? She's the math person.
So, we don't know who math.
I think, I think, I think the others are on our, but yeah, I mean, she didn't have to do that, but she did, she was just doing it out of the, with other districts and discovered that, you know, we were highest in all of them. So, you know, otherwise, we don't have the information at this point. I guess we could, once it comes, it's public, I mean, you could look it up, but.
And as you know, the commissioner, uh, has delayed the reporting of, the, the real scores, uh, until the end of the month, ma- maybe even a little later. Uh, so, but we've done our figuring and we, we feel really good about where we are, so.
I want to move to five point four, the board training opportunities.
I need to remind you, and I will, I will get in contact with you. I will record it, but it'll also be available by Zoom live for a legislative update. And that will be, um, board training, which will be recorded for you. So I'll get that for you and make that available to you, uh, when it's done.
Okay, um, five point five. Presentation, yep.
Ms. Downs is here to bring our annual ESL and GT reviews.
This is for the 2023, 2022, 23 school year.
The, um, if you want to come a little closer.
I apologize.
All right, she's like, no, I do not want to. Just say, sorry, Derek.
And, uh, the first page, uh, you have, should have a standout, is the number of, uh, emergent bilingual students that we had in 2023. Pre-k, we had four, kindergarten, three, uh, first grade, six, second grade, five, third grade, one, fifth grade, fourth grade, five, fifth grade, three, sixth grade, three, seventh grade, five, eighth grade, four, ninth grade, three, tenth grade, one, uh, eleventh and twelfth grade, two each, great. Number of monitored students, we had, uh, one sixth grader, two eighth graders, one ninth grader and two eleventh graders.
Okay, so what's the difference between emergent and monitored?
Okay, the emergent, the monitored students, once a, once a emergent bilingual student, we have to recur reclassification criteria. And that criteria is, for the 22, 23 school year, they had to score, receive a rating of advanced high on all four domains of Tellpass in addition to passing the reading, language arts, start test.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And then, you know, I'll just go ahead and explain, we monitor their grades for two, for the first two years of their monitor period. We check their grades every grading period and if they fell a class, we have an L P A meeting, documentation from the teachers, anyway. Okay, moving on. Comparison of the number of emergent bilinguals for three school years. Um, in, well, as you can see, in 2021, um, we had forty-five emergent bilinguals, 21, 22, forty-six, 22, 23, forty-seven. And on the monitored students, 2021, we had six, 21, 22, nine, and 22, 23, eight.
Are those always the same kids? I mean, they come here and stay or are we talking in and they are?
No, they're pretty much, they're pretty, they're, they're pretty stationary.
Stationary.
Yeah, no, we've had several move in, like, last year initially, we have had several move in. But for the most part, they, they pretty much stay. Uh, oral language proficiency test results, um, oral language proficiency test results are given to head start and pre-k, uh, students that are identified as EB. Um, in 2021, we had one that was, at the end of the year, scored limited English speaker. And 22, 23, we had three. And in 2021, we had three, two point English speakers and 22, 23, we had one. Um, Tellpass, the scores, um, the scores for Tellpass were lower for 22, 23. No, excuse me, hold on. Yes, 22, 23, they combined, they previously writing, uh, for grades two through twelve, writing had been holistically graded. But it, to keep Tellpass more in line with the star, they combined the, they did away with the holistic rating of Tellpass and they combined the Tellpass writing and reading test into one. And so now the kids do everything, second grade through twelfth grade, they do everything on the computer, listening, speaking and then a reading, writing. And it's, it's something, so the scores did dip a little bit, you know, for 22, 23, but that is the reason why, because this was all brand new. The composite rating, um, in comparing 21, 22 comparison, the percentage of students that met, um, in one, that have been in school, US schools for one through four years, thirty-six percent or eight out of twenty-two students met, had a composite rating of advanced high in the 22, 23 school year. And five years plus, it was forty percent or eight out of twenty-two students had been advanced, have rating, uh, composite rating. Um, assessment results, math, um, eighty-two percent, uh, passed math. Reading, language arts, eighty-two percent or eighteen out of twenty-two students. Science, seventy-one percent passed, social studies, fifty percent passed. And that was for grades three through eight. Um, grades nine through twelve, a hundred percent passed the algebra one. English one, a hundred percent passed, English two, seventy-five percent passed, biology, one hundred percent passed, US history, one hundred percent passed. Um, number of ER EBs that achieved masters on star grades three through eight. Math, there were four students, reading, language arts, two, science, one, and they're working, they're achieving masters on social studies. Uh, in the course test, there were none in English one or English two. We did have one in algebra, none in biology, but one in US history. Um, additional information, number of English learners that dropped out of school, zero. We had two students graduate, two students met reclassification, uh, exit criteria, we have no parent denials. We have thirty-one teachers that have an ESL, that are ESL certified and have an E, English learning class or EB in class. And there were three stu-, there were three teachers that had to have an ESL waiver filed for them last year. And since then, all three of those teachers have achieved their ESL certification. Changes for the ESL program, uh, for the twenty-two, for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, uh, T E A decided to change the reclassification criteria from having to have advanced high in all four domains of Tellpass. Now it's the composite rate that has to be advanced high, which I think will be very, very beneficial. And then also one that I forgot to add and I apologize, the district purchased Summit K-12 Tellpass readiness program, which the students in grades two through twelve are utilizing, they're utilizing it about an hour a week to help them to become, get more prepared for Tellpass and I think it's, I think it's going to be really, really good stuff.
High school is a two.
I said two through, did I not say two through twelve?
I should, okay.
I'm sorry. Two, my bad, two through twelve. Middle school, elementary, middle school and high school. Uh, what can we do to improve the program? Um, as always, you know, having more, uh, teachers ESL certified in the high, upper grade levels would be wonderful, but I know that's your project. And, um, estimated number of teachers that need to be for an ESL assignment over the next five years is, is just an estimate of four. Um, do y'all have any questions? Okay, moving on to the gifted and talented. The number of students identifying gifted and talented for the 22, 23 school year at the elementary, we're thirty-one. We have fourteen at ele-, at middle school, sixteen in high school. Um, for the gifted and talented testing, we had twenty students referred for testing and four, um, and, um, four qualified. Um, let's see, uh, the number of emergent bilinguals who also are in gifted and talented, we have three gifted bilinguals that are in the gifted and talented program. And all three of those are on the elementary campus. Uh, no, excuse me, one of them is at middle school this year. Okay, program service and design. Uh, GT students are shared daily with other high achieving students in an enrichment program. They participate in the Texas Performance Standards Project as well as lessons developed from data gathered from math test scores. The lessons focus on higher thinking skills and content knowledge and efforts to further challenge students academically. And the tables is a, shows the growth of, uh, by, from math scores by subject area. Uh, do I need to go over that or? Um, middle school. Um, this is from, uh, Mrs. Faulkner. Um, do I need to read all that? Um. Uh, she, okay, she says, our students have been introduced to different aspects of framework depth, depth and complexity. This framework consists of eleven elements represented with a set of icons. Depth and complexity allows educators to use this schema for different grade levels and multiple content areas. This applied allows for differentiation in classroom for higher level thinkers. And then the middle school students have researched multiple areas using the T, the TPSB and with a curriculum standard that allows student guided projects. Um, let's see, during the holidays, they visited the, uh, the, the middle school GT students visited the, uh, nursing home to ask residents about, the residents about what they would wish for, uh, Christmas. Um, let's see.
I think that was a big hit. I think we remember hearing about that last year, right? Yeah, I think, I think that was.
That's wonderful. And then below was the data, the maps data for last year, the growth for the, um, middle school gifted and talented students. The high school students work on depth, uh, work on TPSB as well, um, through a pull-out model. And, um, they did, um, a pursuit of passion project. And, um, they, three different parts, I see they did a PowerPoint presentation, a tri-fold board and visualized that they had to construct. And then they presented it to the school, they presented it and the presentation was recorded and put on the GT, yeah, uh, YouTube page. Uh, the parent survey, um, I sent out the survey to all the parents of the gifted and talented students. And below, you know, these are the results. Um, I had ten people respond. Um. Let's see. Do I, do I need to go through all this?
We can, we can.
I think, okay, I think.
All right, thank you, I'm sorry.
I have some questions, so trouble.
Do you have a lot of questions?
I do.
Okay, go for it.
Okay. Um. Texas State Plan for the Education Gifted Talent.
Yes, ma'am.
Says that evaluations are done. And you send to the parents, do you do any, any of the practices, do you also, uh, get evaluations from the teachers? And the students?
Um, well, I didn't get any, I didn't send out, I did for the parents, but I didn't do it for the, uh, for the teachers or the, because there's only three teachers that serve the, you know, the pull-out GT and that's myself and Ms. Dyson and Mrs. Faulkner.
Okay, okay. Um, I didn't see, uh, the demographics of the identified kids, especially, I'm curious about the advocates and economically disadvantaged.
Um.
If you can, I, I know I put you on the spot and you have a great child with this, I don't mean to do that, if you can just get me that.
Okay, so are you wanting it for the, for this current school year or for the twenty-two, twenty-three? The current school year, are you talking all across the district?
Yes, all identified gifted.
Economically disadvantaged.
And, oh, we're, we're, or you that, you can. Uh, do you have an advisory group?
No, that is one thing that I'm going to work on this year. I'm, we're going to do that this year.
Because it's in the state.
Yes, yes.
Uh, also, I went through all of the campus and district improvement plans because it's supposed to be in there. And, uh, I found a little bit, I didn't find anything at middle school. I did at, uh, the other two campuses, um, you know, a little. Um, which I understand, this is ten percent of the whole student body, but still, we need to do it. Um, a question from you and Lori both. When you put those gifted kids with the high achievers, have you found among the high achievers gifted kids? Because they've been in there.
Do you have an exposure?
Like, are you saying, are you?
You observed them in there and so are you seeing some of them?
A lot of those students, I would say, have been referred to GT and did not qualify.
Okay.
So, I would say probably ninety percent or better have been through them.
I'm just curious what you're saying because, you know, one of the big things that keeps kids out of gifted is, uh, the teacher. We're talking classroom teachers. So I'm thinking we duck somebody watching them who knows what you're doing and I'm curious.
Yeah, I, I do believe it's great exposure for them, um, and gives them opportunities than we have otherwise. But we still do try to address individually and be with just GT students.
That was my next question, how do you differentiate from the gifted kids even within that, because you have to be?
One, I have not started it yet because we've still been working on just a project at the beginning of the year project where they were. The project is entitled, My Dream Vacation to Another Country, and this is doing third through fifth grade. They chose a country and they've done some basic research about it. And then from scratch, they are creating a tribal brochure. I did a table, the only formatting I did was, um, a, um, table on Google Doc, a three column table. And I have taught them how to insert shapes and word art and format the colors, the backgrounds and all that. And that I just give them the Carver launch, you know, creative license to, to do that. And that's what they're working on, they're finishing that up now. And so I haven't started yet, but probably in the next month, I will start working with the GT kids one day a week doing the Texas Performance Standards Projects.
Okay. Um, do you have a written plan for professional learning? Or gifted teaching?
We.
I've written, like, I've always included with Ms. Dyson.
We go, I go to the service center and get a six-hour update because that is required. And we get a six-hour update. And then I go to the, uh, the coordinator, the gifted and talented coordinator meetings that Amanda Carpenter, the advanced acting editor consultant does, I go to those.
Okay. Um, I would throw in here, like, you know, that the state gifted conference is in Dallas this year. And it would be really nice if those three teachers, uh, could go even for just a day because all of the presenters are teachers. And do this on a daily basis and just move that out, uh, be very good. Um, acceleration, any kids on any campus accelerated?
Just not accelerated.
Well, beyond, beyond their peers, uh, in, a fifth grader going to eighth grade back here.
Yes, I think we talked about that just a little bit at the, was it at the, um, another last meeting? But we talked about, so now we've adopted a policy where these kids can start to jump from one grade to the next. But we just adopted that, is that right?
Oral school math and they put that in the program to do the, they accelerated sixth grade to, you know, so that possibly they were ready for algebra in eighth grade.
You know, really, I think the bottom line of that is, you don't deny a child that needs it.
We did have one student last year that actually was enrolled in algebra one and they started their day at the high school and then they come back to work.
That's, that's the big thing. Also, there's something I have on this year, is that you have to have a plan for your materials. You have to evaluate the materials you're using. I didn't know it till this year. How you select materials to work with the kids.
Well, all curriculum or GT.
G T.
The, how I do it is I use math data, the, for like, I, I look at their math scores and basically choose levels that, you know, that it says that they are ready to do, skills that they are ready to develop. I generally select the TEES for like one grade level above and look at skills that says that they're ready to develop. And I, and I use that to guide my instruction. And I use Study Island and I use. And I use Study Island and I use, um, let's see, Study Island, I use, look at quizzes, um.
I was curious when you were talking about that, when you were talking about evaluating curriculum, I think it was something different. What, so are you, are you talking about like, as far as the materials that we're using or?
Because I don't have a set, like, I don't have like a set curriculum.
It says district guidelines for evaluation of resources.
So resources?
Used to serve GT students are established and used in selecting materials that are appropriate for differentiation.
I wasn't sure, but, so, so that's what you're talking about?
And I use your plot as well. Okay.
That's all my questions.
Okay. I think going back to, you said about the things, one of the things that Lindsay Tucker, she is, we have this, it's called Math in the Middle Curriculum, that all states of the eighth grade math teachers use, but we're in the process of purchasing the Algebra One. So, um, they will have access, each teacher to the next grade level, and Lindsay's willing to go ahead and start implementing some of that Algebra One for those students that are ready for it, but they're not necessarily in Algebra One class and just getting prepared.
It makes it easier, you don't have to have somebody over to high school, rather fearing and then come.
I, I did not look on the website, I should have, I should know the answer to this question, but, um, I know for GT that the teachers, um, can, um, you know, put the name in of the student, but the parents also can.
Easily.
Online.
Community members. Yes, maybe it is online, it's under the Parents tab, you go down to Gifted and Talented.
It's on there.
Yes, it's on, it's online, anybody, parents, community members, um, even students themselves can refer themselves for testing.
Wonderful, all right.
Great job.
Thank you for presenting that.
Appreciate that very much, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so that moves us to action items. Uh, six point two is consideration approval of donations and gifts to the district.
And we have two pages, we've got five, two months for it.
Oh, right.
So, um, the, the press is not here, right? Uh, I can read them, Ministerial Alliance, uh, gave ten thousand dollars toward, uh, our school supplies. And, uh, I thought that was a really good thing, you all voted to pay for that, and then the Ministerial Alliance, uh, has donated money for helping us with that. Uh, and especially now since some of our, um, campuses overspent just a little bit. Uh, Commandeured County, uh, Charlo there, a thousand dollars, ESA, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-five cents. Uh, and, uh, they give one to Shaq and one to Academic Awards. And then Wins Auto, uh, the Bass Club, if you can tell, the Bass Club is out there alive and well. So, Wins Automotive, Jeff and Robin McGinnis, Lone Star Insurance, um, and the next page is all Bass Club. Uh, Holman Corporation, Dan J. Wildlife Branches, City Inspections, Penn Hill Pipe. By the way, Penn Hill Pipe has been very, very good to us in lots of other ways, they donated lots of pipe to the, um, Ag Building and, um, they've been really, really good. First National Bank, The Lion Tire, Total Club, Gooden Patrol, Texas Cattle Exchange, Bayer RV, and Bayer Moat Ford. Um, we'll also tell you that, um, Rowdy Ruperson has volunteered to help with the Bass Club. And, uh, and so that's really, really good, so.
We're just waiting for something to make a vote, that's all we're waiting on now.
So now we need to vote.
For a flea for them.
So, but it is.
I have a question.
We have, just a while, we have seven complete teams.
Okay, have they gone anywhere yet?
Yes.
At the first tournament, how'd that go?
First tournament, we had four fish in there, um, two of them caught fish that qualified. Um, and, um, the only female caught biggest bass.
Naturally, yes.
So.
I agree, I concur.
What, what other donations go toward for the Bass Club, what do they, what, because they're not?
They go towards paying their entry fees. And then, um, and then also if a team makes to the regional or state tournament, uh, then we'll help cover their entry fees and then possibly some logic costs, depending on where the Bass Club is. Um, we'll also probably cover their jerseys this year, um, because we're able to get the cost of them down from, normally they're about a hundred, ten to a hundred and twenty dollars. Um, we're able to get them down to about fifty dollars, so we'll, and, so we'll part every cost of those for this year.
It's a very talkative thing with that.
It's, it's an expensive sport, but there is, like, they gave out forty thousand dollar scholarships at the last tournament event, so. And, and donations of prizes and stuff, so, like, our, our team that have the big bass and the bales, um, they each have a fifty-dollar gift card. So, yeah.
Make a motion to approve the donation gifts to the district.
Okay, secondly.
All those in favor? Menus? Okay, thank you, six point two, consideration approval for, uh, the GKG local policy.
Okay, the reason this is in here is the cause of the next thing on the agenda item. And, and so in order, in order for us to, to accept volunteers into our program, this needs to be in our work policy. Uh, uh, it's guidelines for, uh, volunteers.
Okay, so in theory, you could approve this first one and not approve the second one, that would be fine, that we would be prepared for the future.
But you can't approve the second one without approving the first one. But the first one will have no bearing unless we decide on the second one.
Captain Marable, do, uh, we are, do we already have volunteers though and everything, we just don't have an official?
We just don't have, what we discovered, there's a bug in here.
I had a new shoe in over here, I saw the.
Uh, thank you. Yes, we do, and that, that was what really bothered me, was, we, we do have volunteers, uh, but I think this is really valuable to have guidelines for having.
Okay, so then there's other reasons other than just the second item that's coming up. Okay, does anybody have any questions about that one?
How do you, then, currently, before we do this, how do you, you know?
How you miss, because I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Did, was it David that got licensed and, um?
In past, but he did.
I'd like to make any comments.
Uh, so now if you have a volunteer, what do you require them to do?
Presently, we do background check on them.
Background?
No, no, just background check.
So, um, I am a volunteer at that elementary and I background check a lot, and I mean, I think that's all.
Hey, David.
They do, I mean, hm, don't want to know, but anyway, so far we're looking at there. Um, okay, any other questions on that one? Okay, second for motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the policy on district volunteers, nine point one, half point three, whatever it is.
Thank you. One second. Okay, and all those in favor? Okay, that's the menus. Okay, yeah, let's talk about six point three.
This is something that has to be brought to the board, uh, one way or the other, the board has to decide whether or not we're going to accept chaplains into the school district. Every school district in Texas State is required to make this decision.
I don't want to join here to.
It's, um, um. I don't, I have no druthers on it.
So I think the first time it was presented, I think maybe we've come back a little bit later, the first time it was presented was a little odd as compared to, uh, referencing your counselors, it's not in a replacement of a counselor, it is for a, you know, a scenario that, that might pop up, that you hope doesn't pop up, that you might need extra hands on deck. And I know that, um, I think I told a couple of you what typically happens, if it's, if it's a small enough situation, is that you can, and you know far enough in advance, you can call counselors from other campuses to come over, and that happens a lot, and our counselors are called out to other campuses, so that's kind of how we.
We already do that.
Yeah, that's how we handle it so far, this is for a, a larger scenario.
And a chaplain is someone who is actually a certified chaplain. Uh, I do, I do happen to know that, because I heard her mention it one day during the sermon, that the pastor of the church I attend is a chaplain, in, in a former, um, life, that she served as a chaplain. But, I don't know, there may be others in, in, in the district. I. I have no, I have no preference on that.
See the need.
Well, maybe that's, maybe that's well put, I, I.
And, and of course, these people will, will be background checked and, you know, you'll, you'll have your list of, of your particulars, you're not just sent random individuals, you get to, you know, kind of have a, a waiting list of, of who you would call in case of a scenario.
I think we're fine with the way we are.
So we have to vote on this one way or the other, and so, are there any other questions on it? Okay, let's just, let's just do the vote, so if, um, so we have to vote on it, right? So somebody has to make a motion so that you get it recorded one way or the other, right?
I think, um, not after knowledge, you didn't approve it.
No.
I, I think.
Okay, so, so, so if somebody wants to make a motion, yeah, so if somebody wants to make a motion, they can now. Okay, so let's move on.
All right, the next thing is the textbook committee, um, this is about our rules that we have, our textbook committee every year, and, and we're going, we'll correct the, if, if book, not bull. I think I have. Brett said the, um, textbook committee is very powerful.
I'm just, I'm not looking at the agenda, I'm going to hand the, uh.
All right, anyway, they, these are the people that are on our textbook committee, uh, Ms. Allen, you want to tell me who, what book we're looking at this year?
Uh, science.
Science. Math has been again, this again, so, and a few CTV courses, it's just all.
So, are we approving the committee members? Is that what we're approving?
Yes.
Okay, all right, making for a motion on that one.
I'll make a motion that we, that we approve the textbook meeting every single.
Okay, all of us in favor? Yes. All right, tell us about this activity bus.
Well, we love our activity bus, and it is in constant ease, and it does save us from having to run a big bus very often to, uh, if you have the golf team or you have the tennis team, or you have, uh, uh, the bank club, or if you have an ag, uh, uh, contest of some kind, if you don't have more than fourteen to go to. Uh, and, and you don't have to have a CDL to drive it. So, um, we use, we use our bus a lot.
Just a regular driver's license will do it?
With training, with a ten-hour training.
Okay.
And we can provide that in district.
Okay.
Um, the last time we bought one, it was like just over sixty-seven thousand dollars. Um, but if you notice the price of this now, this very exact same thing except newer, you know, it was a hundred and seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars, and that is the best price we've been able to find. Uh, and, and we haven't gone out for more than this one price because there's companies, unless we know we can shop for it. But we would like very much to buy another activity bus, it, it's just a, it's a good thing to have.
So this activity bus that we're talking about is the exact same size as the current one that we have, obviously, and it has a wrap on it, or will have a wrap on it? Just like, maybe not just like the one that we currently have, but is it part of the price?
Well, no, it's not part of the price, the wrap was put on it out of Ethnibank.
Okay.
Uh, the last, of course, uh, he's not there anymore, but we did have him call right before, um, Jim Bub left him, wanted to wrap something else. They were, they were very anxious to wrap something else, I don't, I don't think it'd be a problem, but that was dominated by them, they didn't know about it, the, the wrap was. And, uh, uh, and I think it's, it's gorgeous and, and represents us very, very well as we travel to events.
Do you have any data on how often it's used?
A lot.
I was gonna say, yeah. Would that be terrible, hard to the wheels on them?
It's a lot for us.
Every, every week. Every, ev- every week, and usually multiple times during the week.
I know what I want to use.
Across kind of girls and.
When I want to use it, since I have a CEO, I'm always bumped up to the big bus because someone else is using the little.
Yeah, it's, it's just very, very popular, uh, even our basketball team is used it, um, when we didn't have a basketball coach that could drive the bus, he has his certification, but, uh.
We're going to use this in lieu of the big bus this year.
So the requirement is, it, so it says fourteen passengers, so anything that's below, where they can fit into that, is that the, the law, that it has to be only fourteen people on the bus?
Fourteen passengers and a driver.
Okay, so.
But are we, I know last year we got three large buses, and we've been buying one a year, we're going to use this in lieu of the big bus.
We're not buying any buses this year.
Okay.
Yeah, we're good on buses because we got that grant.
Kind of maybe where you're going with that, that it would save mileage on our brand new buses that we're using for the bus route?
Well, that, and.
Even if it's enough room by this bus and then.
This bus, and then turn around to buy a large school bus.
No.
I know we were, got a grant last year.
We have, you're right, though, we have been budgeting for a bus every year.
Bus every year.
But because we got that grant last year, we got three new buses.
Correct.
Plus we got the one that we'd ordered the year before, uh, in, in last year's budget, so, so we actually, we have four brand.
And you never received that check from those?
We finally got the check, yes.
Hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars.
So, yes, we'll, we'll not be asking for a big bus this year.
Since we're on buses, the one field, football field, I talked to you about this.
I know, and I know.
But they should, every day, they should make sure those windows are open.
I tell them that.
Okay, I did a little bit of research on that. I asked, you know, a very well, well-versed in the situation person, my son, and I said, what's going on with that bus? And he said, well, the coaches try to give us a chocolate milk and a peanut butter jelly after every practice. And he said, somebody left their chocolate milk on that bus and let it cook and cook and cook. And then when the bus took off, a couple, like, a, a long weekend, the bus took off and it all rolled all out and, and. And so a lot of times, they did have those windows down for a long time, tried to air that out, and when they roll them up, then that's what you say.
I've been by many times, it rang right straight down and.
Yeah, it does ring right into it.
I have stopped myself and racing windows on it, uh, I don't go by there as often as I used to when I lived out in the other direction, but, but I've done it, uh, David's done it. I have talked to the coaches, um.
I'll let you train those kids at the end of the day.
I know.
Take it off the bus, all the windows are.
I know, I know, and, and I will pass that on again.
Is this the expiration date for this quote?
Yeah, it was when we got it, but, but this was, this was going to be on the September board meeting, and so, uh, that, I know that we didn't get to have a board meeting, so. There, there's, we're still good.
It says twenty-two.
So how much do you anticipate, when everybody's fighting for the one bus, so, is this one, will it be used equally as much?
I think so. I know I put in for cheer in the summer just to make sure I bought it.
They do.
And I know we had a couple of playoff games last year where there was not another way, and so like, we would like, and surely there's bits and pieces to get them to the suburbs and, yep.
And this is a lot cheaper than running to suburban.
What about using them for the bus route, can you do that?
No, it doesn't have a R on it. It doesn't have a stop arm. We found one cheaper than this, but the company will sell it to us because it's not approved to sell to schools. They can sell it to a church, but they can't sell it to a school, and so. They won't sell it to us.
Okay, have any questions on this one?
I thought maybe we were suggesting we were too old. No, it, it really will be costs, I mean, and we will, we will not be asking for a big bus.
I made a motion to approve the purchase of the. I made a motion to approve the purchase of the activity bus.
I'll second it.
Alright, all those in favor? Okay, that was everybody. Uh, six point six, this is consideration of Principles of Nursing and Science course.
Alright, this is up here, Mr. Chapman, you want to say anything?
Uh, it's just an additional course that goes along with our health science program, uh, it's Principles of Nursing, uh, it's gonna partner with or proxy with medical terminology, we currently have medical terminology in the fall, this will be a s- uh, spring semester course, just gives them an op- additional opportunity to use those skills and knowledge in that bracket before they go into the bracket. It'll mainly be our sophomore year course, uh, let's see if we can take med term, sophomore, sometimes junior, um, depending on when they, um, took Principles of Health Science, so. It's an innovative course, which means we can offer it, however, the board has to approve the offering. Um, it counts as an elective credit, not a, not a, maybe the type of credit, I think you put it, so, for science credit.
It's fantastic. If somebody, um, this is related but not, so if somebody decides sophomore year and they've already spent time doing other things and like, wow, I want to be a nurse now, they can go ahead and start catching up at that point.
They can, they might not be a completer as I talked about earlier, because on that graph, there's some that multiple, we have some, uh, health science will be interesting in the coming years because we've pushed a lot of our age graders into that, um, to meet grant requirements for the last two years and so, um, we're going to have a lot of kids in this program, just naturally by the course, of course, offerings could, could include this program.
But they could still do come.
They could.
They could still have time to get cool.
Yeah, they're sophomore, they can, it depends on.
Right.
There's, there's plenty of time for sophomore.
Alright, looking for a motion on that one?
I'll make a motion to approve the Principles of Nursing Science.
I'll submit.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, six point seven, uh, the planning and budget calendar for twenty-four twenty-five.
This is just, um, something that we do every year and, and if it's proven, if we start in, in, uh, January, that's a lot different from what we do every year, puts the dice down for, for when, I mean, they have everything in place.
Okay, as a requirement that we approve it as part of our budget planning, okay? Looking for a motion on that one?
I'll make a motion to approve budget, or plan in the budget calendar. I'll second it.
All those in favor? Okay, that's everybody. Alright, six point eight, consideration approval of our statement of assurance.
Uh, this is something that we have to post on our website and, uh, it's kind of posted issues on the, on the website and, uh, just assures that everyone, um, that we have a digitalized, the sorry schedule, that we have a written policy for, that's equivalent for all our campuses and, um, that during the process, a budget process area, everybody's treated fairly, so.
I'll make a motion to approve this for assurance.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Six point nine, consideration approval, uh, to reschedule our November board meeting from the twentieth to the twenty-seventh. And this is a little bit innovation to six point ten. So, that'll, that'll cause there to be a little bit less of a gap, uh, if we're to approve six point ten. Anyone have any objections to that? Alright, looking for a motion on that one?
I'll make a motion to reschedule the board meeting to the twenty-seventh to the twenty-second.
Thank you, second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. And six point ten, consideration approval, uh, to cancel the December board meeting due to the Christmas break. That's customary, isn't that, and it, we've done it for the last three years. You can, you can reject. When I make the motion, you can't.
Vote against it.
Second?
I'll, I'll second.
Terrell's for second, alright, all those in favor?
Very.
That's unanimous. Alright, everyone's covered, uh, number seven, and so I believe you're only looking for number eight, the adjournment.
Eight.
Sure. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Looking for a second?
I bet Derek will second it.
Derek, Derek will second it.
Oh yeah, he needs to get in on this.
You seconded the adjournment?
Yes.
Were you asleep?
All those in favor, unanimous. We're going to close with sound at eight forty-two.
Let's go with the score.
I have to check, I've tried to be professional and I'll check.